Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEchrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Garcia are absent from the meeting tonight.
If everyone would please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The first item of business is an appointment of the Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem McEchrin has the city's voting delegate to the May 15 VVWA meeting.
I have a question is when we appoint Mayor Protem to VVWA, does that, do we have to keep doing this or can he be that all the time if someone's not available? Can we do it that way so we don't have to keep coming back?
Question.
Yes, I believe the council could adopt a resolution that provides that if the delegate and alternate are not available that.
So he would be the second alternate automatically if the delegate and alternate is not available?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. Can we amend the?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. To be clear here, does that mean that?
We're not going any more.
The delegate and alternate are going to permanently be unavailable?
That was a part of the plan.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
No, it wasn't. So with that correction, motion please.
Aye, some of.
Aye, second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries with Councilmembers Garcia and Kennedy absent.
And just briefly, could you send something in writing to our clerk?
Yes, I was planning on doing that.
This next item is the workshop that has been scheduled tonight for the discussion, possible direction regarding the classification and compensation study. City Manager Doug Robertson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Early last year, the council awarded a contract to Public Sector Personal Consultants, PSPC for short, for the class and comp study. PSPC studied our city staff's pay and benefits in relation to comparator cities and other agencies as necessary that are listed in the report. From that point then, city executive staff and department heads made some internal equity comparisons to make sure that there weren't disparities of similar jobs within the city. And then PSPC finalized the study for discussion tonight. We stopped short of recommending an adoption tonight, just simply to await further direction from the council as to that implementation, which we'll discuss later. I've got a few recommendations at the end of the presentation following any questions you may have that I'd like to recommend. The staff that are listed in the study have not been afforded the appeals portion of the study, again pending direction from the city council on implementation that may or may not be necessary. Because of that, there may be some minor changes as staff members are afforded the opportunity to appeal anything they disagree with in relation to their position. Those individual appeals would be heard by the executive staff with the results of any successful appeals included in that final implementation. So with that, let me introduce Kate Tilzer from PSPC.
Before you begin, did I understand that when you did what, the job description or the salary, that you say the staff can appeal?
The staff can appeal the job description, not just the salary. They can come in with any evidence that they have that would support a change to the job category, but not a specific change to their individual salary.
So what discretion did someone have after the employees filled out what they believe is their job description? For example, if they said leaps tall buildings, wears a cape, rescues maidens? Who challenges that?
Actually, the supervisor reviewed the statements of the employees and included as one of the final pages of that submission to PSPC in writing. The supervisor included their own comments regarding that person's job description. So that's how that was handled. And then PSPC brought out several consultants to interview individual employees and supervisors as necessary to make sure that they had, in fact, correctly recorded things down on their written forms.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a quick question. When you say that they can appeal, what is that because their union or how do you get that? What authority do they have?
That was part of the study, was that, you know, we have 300-plus employees and there may be one or two employees or maybe a few more that perhaps got overlooked for some reason or perhaps when they wrote down the description of their job or when they were interviewed, they missed something. So that appeal would simply be to provide additional information that if they believed that they were classified in error.
Oh, okay.
I don't expect a tremendous number of those, but it's yet to be seen. We had originally believed that that would be part of the report that came back to the council, but given direction from council over the last few months with a desire for more involvement in these processes, we decided to hold off on that until we had some sort of implementation plan in place. Obviously, one option, not that we're recommending it, but one option would be for the council to say, "This is good information, but we're not going to implement it," at which point the appeals wouldn't happen because there wouldn't be any purpose for them.
The reason that I had some concerns about the job description, City Victorville went through some economic hard times and there was a reduction of about 200-plus employees. And as a result, there was a lot of the jobs that were combined. Under the circumstances and the urgency of the matter, there wasn't a classification study completed. At that time, there was a lot of discussion with individual employees and employees took on four greater responsibilities in what might be reflected in their job description. But my understanding that there was always an intent when the economy got better and they started filling jobs, then they would separate the employees out, re-study the job descriptions and have them fairly accurate so people wouldn't keep doing other jobs that they might not be compensated for because they not only changed job descriptions, but we reduced compensation. And I didn't know if this started from where we're at currently or did it go back to the basis of job descriptions that existed two and a half years ago?
No, it actually starts from where we are currently. And in fact, part of the deliverables from PSBC is new job descriptions that then match exactly what the employees are doing, which of course then ties into their compensation in a fair way. Okay? That's it? Kate?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm happy to be here to be able to present to you and answer any questions you might have about the classification and compensation study. So I know you have a copy of the report, so feel free to stop me if you have questions. I'll just kind of hit the highlights. I'm not going to go through and read everything you already have to you. You've had it, had an opportunity to read it, so I'll kind of hit the highlights. And then if you have any questions, feel free to stop me and I'll be more than happy to answer any as we move forward.
It takes a moment.
Oh, okay. Did I do it wrong? It's pretty simple. There we go. Okay, so Project Scope was to review all of the classifications that existed at the city of Victorville to identify where there was various levels, distinct level differences for all the occupational job classes that existed at the city, look at the titles, validate the titles if they're still appropriate, make recommendations if the titles maybe aren't reflecting the work that is being performed currently, survey the competitive labor market, and then look at where the city lies in relation to the competitive labor market and provide some recommendations about salary administration practices in order to make sure that the city is able to recruit and retain employees within this competitive market, and to review the prevailing benefit practices. So it is a total compensation study, so not only did we collect data on the base dollars that are being paid employees in the competitive market, but we also factored in what the cash value of those other big-ticket benefits would be, purse contributions, medical, cafeteria, and so on. So we're looking at both, base and that total compensation. The goals would then be to deliver to the city recommendations in terms of the class structure, the occupational schematic of class titles, some salary recommendations and administration practices, and make sure that this salary administration is easy to administer, easy to update, and easy for employees to understand. So we want to keep it simple. So we began the process with getting to know the jobs that exist at the city. What we used is a position analysis questionnaire that each employee filled out. We invited every employee to complete this position analysis questionnaire, which detailed all of the things that they do, what are the tasks, what are the functions, what skills and knowledge are required. The employee completed that questionnaire. Managers reviewed it to make sure that they weren't saying that they would be leaping tall buildings in a single bound unless they really were. So through that process of the employees signing off and the manager reviewing it, we had a little bit of a cross-check there, some accountability. And then we came back, consultants came back and interviewed each employee. So we sat down with those employees and asked them, explained, so we can understand the information provided on the PAQ, what does that look like in the real world, so we can get some clarification. So through that process, we were able to get to know the job classifications that currently exist at the city. We were able to then look and see if the titles were meaningful, given their current job duties and responsibilities. And once we got through that process and created a list of the titles, that's where we had a quality review with department managers to make sure we didn't miss anything. Our number-one goal with this process is to get it right. So through that, we want to make sure that we've not missed anything. If an employee forgot to add something in the PAQ, we want to make sure we've got review processes built in so that we'll hopefully have everything right before we get to any type of an appeal level. So when we went through the classification, our findings regarding the classifications was that the city currently had 166, 176 job titles that were in use. Some of them were some duplications. Some of them were new job classes that had emerged. But when it's all said and done, we actually were consolidating the 176 job classes down into 146 job classes. There's a table in the report that details classification by classification what happened to those, those that were merged, those that maybe were new job classes or job classes that were created. We had 368 employees that were on the payroll at the time that that classification study was conducted. There was 58 of them that were actually reclassified. The remaining 310 were all either a title change or they were correctly classified. So 84% of the city's employees were correctly classified. Small percentage of the 58 had different job classifications where they were more appropriate to be classified in a different job title. This is just a highlight of Table 1, which is included in the report, showing the current job title. We have two tables in the report for you. One of them lists them in job family order. So think career ladder. These are similar complexity jobs or similar underlying classifications. So this is the administrative and clerical support group that I have listed for you. There's also Table 2, which lists them alphabetical order. So as you look through the chart, you can see based on your current title, what happened to that title? Did it change? Has it merged with another job class?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed administrative intern. Should intern be temporary?
Probably.
Yeah. We don't have any permanent positions that are administrative intern.
Okay. Just for clarification so that no one gets misled, could they modify that to say administrative intern-dash-temporary?
Could be modified to do that, yes. Alphabetical order according to the current job class title and same information, just sorted differently. Table 3 is the resultant schematic of occupational job classes, so it's what the city's classification structure looked like after all of the jobs were merged, title changed, deleted, whatever the transaction was. This is just a representative listing showing, again, this is occupational group order, which lends itself well to that career ladder concept. We did go through each employee to verify based on the PAQ information that was submitted. So once we identified the job classes that exist at the city, we went through to verify that each employee was in the most appropriate job class. So while for the purposes of this report, the employee names are not showing on the reports, the managers have a listing of their employees so they know what proposed job class title is per position in their department.
I have another question.
Yes.
Generally, if an individual is an assistant, they're assisted to something. An office is not a person. And so how do they? Who do they work for? What are they assisted to?
The title of the office assistant?
Any office anywhere in the building on any department?
Yeah, it's across-the-city title that's used, and it is one that is recognized in the marketplace, the office assistant. Lots of different employers use that title, so it's a commonly recognized title. Yes, I would agree with you on that, that we would want to have a title that was descriptive. But for office assistant, this was one that was in use in the marketplace to describe this level. So it's sort of the prevailing practice for this particular clerk. Typist has sort of gone away. Office assistant is the new title. So we went with what the prevailing market practice was for this class.
Primarily because of a change in the industry and not necessarily a change in duties here? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Primarily because the title is changing in the industry as a whole, not because the duty's changed here.
Correct. Right. When we make a recommendation, we try and steer with what the prevailing practice is in the market. So if we start to see office assistant, secretary goes away, it's replaced by office assistant. So when we make a recommendation, we try and be consistent with what the market practice is for a particular title. That way, at least there's something logical to tie in those title changes to. I do want to point out that we did review during the study, the Fair Labor Standards Act, which of the positions applied as exempt level. So we reviewed that to verify which of those positions would qualify and not need to be paid overtime under the Fair Labor Standards Act. The assumption would be that any job that does not clearly meet exempt status would be considered non-exempt and should be paid overtime. Those are applied at the position level, not at the job class level. So we looked employee by employee to verify that they met the criteria for being classified as an exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act. So there is a recommendation for each position based upon the PAQ information submitted. So that's that far column, recommended FLSA. We'll slide, talk about it. Okay, here's just a summary of the position classification process. So in looking at each of the positions or employees, we had 108 that there was no change on, 202 there was a title modification, and then there was 58 of them that were reclassified to another job class.
Sure, you're going to cover this in the salary portion, but didn't I read a recommended freeze on some positions?
Probably for the salary.
Salaries?
Freezing salaries when they hit that maximum.
Well, it was tied to the job description, was it not? I mean, they had to conduct a survey. But you'll get to it.
Yeah, when we get to the salary part of it, yes, any employee that would be paid over the current maximum would be frozen.
Okay.
Okay, salary survey methodology. So once we get to know the classifications that exist at the city and verify that we've got an appropriate and a defensible occupational structure, each employee is in the most appropriate classification, next we want to gather some market data about the value in the marketplace of each of those job classes. So we're looking at competitive employers in the area, employers who would have similar occupations. So a lot of these employers are your neighbors. Some of them have, we looked at cities that had a similar type of growth and development pattern because then we would have some similarity for your planning and development jobs, some of them that would have the water utility jobs. So we tried to find employers that would have a nice cross-section of jobs that would be considered competitors in the marketplace or places where your employees might go or where you might recruit from. So this is the list of employers that were included in the salary survey.
And I have only one question. It seems temeculous, quite a distance away. How'd that get included?
I'd have to go back to my notes to know for sure. It might have had to do with the amount of growth that was happening in that community at the time that we were talking about market comparators, rapidly growing cities.
And I saw that you have Mojave Water Agency listed here and Inland Empire Utilities Agency, but you don't have Victor Valley Wastewater. Why is that?
I'm not sure. I would have to look at my notes to see why we don't have that. The wastewater function?
I also have a question regarding. Is that we extracted private sector data for San Bernardino area for Economic Research Institute, ERI, salary assessor database matching the city's salary survey benchmarks. Why would you use private sector information if we're a municipal? Because private sector has higher wages because they don't have benefits.
Some of the jobs that you have here at the city, you compete with the private sector for some of those. They're not all municipal-specific jobs, so for instance, office clerical, human resources, IT jobs, accounting jobs, those you may have a private sector.
When you mix them in to this formula that you're using, they're going to be higher in wages because they don't have benefits with them normally in private sector. So it skews the formula that you're using. Basically, it's going to bump it up, although if you look at the overall picture, they don't have benefits, so.
We developed the market model based upon where it was reasonable that you would compete with employers for a specific type of employee. So private sector employers are certainly going to draw away your employees, office clerical, IT, accounting. Your employees may want to go to a private sector employer because they pay higher wages. So that's why it was included. It's the salt and pepper in there. We're not selecting employers based upon their ability to pay or whether they do pay high or low. We want an objective, even-handed market model of anybody that would employ these same occupations that may be a potential draw from or draw to for employees.
Okay, well, Atlanta was not in here, so it looks like you handpicked the higher cities so that you would get the higher wage. That's how this appears?
No, that's not what we did. We looked for the market model that represented the competitive employers for the area.
Okay, so why isn't Atlanta and VVWA in there?
I would have to look at my notes to know. We've proposed market model and got feedback saying, "Where did the employees come from? Where do employees go to?" So the specific details of who is in and who is out, why we would have selected or not, I don't have with me. I could certainly look at my notes and let you know.
Councilmember Vias and Mayor Cox, Mayor Protem McEchrin, I know that the comparator list did come back to the city council at one point, but I don't recall. I remember Adelanto coming up during that discussion, I vaguely recall it. So we can take a look at that meeting to see how that was answered before as to why they weren't included. I think it had to do with size of the organization or something along those lines, but we can certainly take a look back at that as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look at my notes. Okay, other questions on this slide? Okay, so what we then did, once we developed the market model and once we decided on who would we be comparing wages to, then we collected the salary surveys or the salary plans for each of those comparator employers. We selected benchmark job classes from each of those salary plans, and we controlled that internally. We looked at their salary structures, salary plans, and identified which jobs were the closest match to the city of Victorville. So using what we had gathered during the PAQ process, the knowledge and information about the content of the jobs, we then tried to find those jobs that based on content were closest to the city of Victorville's job classes. So we didn't just look at titles, we looked at what is actually happening in those job classes. So they're not necessarily going to be a perfect match because we all know that there's no such thing as a perfect match, even within the city of Victorville, two accounting clerks might be doing some different things. But what we're looking for is that the job duties, the level of complexity, the knowledge and skills that's required is essentially a comparable match to that job. So it's not perfect, but we're looking at very similar jobs, very similar duties, so that we can start to gain some inferences into what's the value of that occupation on the market.
And a question.
Yes.
You noticed salary range maximum comparisons. Did you someplace adjust for the employees in Victorville that worked 36 hours as opposed to 40 hours with these other entities? Most of them probably worked 40 hours?
Yes, we actually used the hourly rate and just compared the base hourly rate in the salary survey. So we're just looking at just the flat hourly rate. So we were able to look at market value without factoring in 40 hours versus 32. So we just compared the hourly rate for each of those. We did compare the structures, so what employees may be paid within those salary ranges may vary from the actual maxes. So we're just looking at a structure-to-structure comparison, looking at the maximum that city of Victorville pays for an occupation and comparing it to what the maximum is being paid by the comparator. So we use the average of all of those maximum to make our comparison. That's the term that we refer.
In the last line, total compensation, the cash value of the employer contributions to family enrollment, medical, dental, vision, and contributions to deferred compensation, retirement, and auto allowance were calculated and added to the salary range maximum.
Correct.
So was the 10% then reduced from the salary range since you're comparing 36 hours to 40 hours?
Well, we figured out what the hourly equivalent is for that and added it to that. So if we had an 8% contribution, some of them are flat dollar amount and some of them would be a percentage amount. So we calculated what the flat dollar amount would be based upon 40 hours in a week and then factored that back in. So it is prorated, so we looked at an hourly equivalent. The percentage ones, then we did apply that percentage rate to the hourly.
So if we decided then that we're going to go ahead and we're 40 hours a week and added four hours to each employee, then that would move that up comparatively. That's 10% increase in salary when you go from 36 to 40 hours a week.
If we're looking at 2,080 hours a year versus the 2,176?
Well, you know, the full time of the year, 2,080 hours, but if you're working 36 hours as opposed to 40 hours, trying to figure out if you reduce it to an hourly rate, that doesn't, the hourly rate for that job doesn't necessarily fit the same salary range.
Right, we used a 40 hours as one FTE. So your employees are actually not a 1.0 FTE. So yes, it is factored in, so we're assuming 40 hours when we're making all of our comparisons, but then we're factoring it back down to an hourly rate.
So then, so if you look at an employee, this wouldn't be their salary, this would actually be if they worked 40 hours a week?
The salary would be based upon however many hours they work. So if it's 32 hours, then we would have to multiply by 32 to get that full-time equivalent or 40 hours.
Mr. Mayor, the way the comparison was done was based on an hourly rate. So any compensation, if there was an auto allowance, was divided by the number of hours so that we were always comparing hourly versus hourly and never comparing monthly versus monthly. So the term salary, I know I think of more of a monthly or an annual salary, but it really, everything was calculated on an hourly basis so that it would be adjusted for our 36-hour work week. So that if you, if the employees at some point, if the council decided to go back to a 40-hour work week, it would not change the comparison one bit. They would be ultimately making more money per month, but they would also be working more hours per month. But ultimately, the comparison would have been the same because it would have been divided by 40 instead of 36.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. That is the correct answer, yes. We factored that in, so we did not inflate or deflate because of that 40 versus 32. We wanted to get to that 2,080 a year. What would it be? That way, we're not overstating the value of the benefit.
Kate, you keep saying 32, it's actually 36.
36, I'm sorry.
36.
I want to ask another question, but I was willing to do the 32.
Yeah, our employees are on a 36-hour work week right now because of the 10% furlough.
Gotcha. Okay, yes. And that, so in answer to your question, yes, we considered that so that we would not overstate the value of the benefits, so that if we apply 40, it skews it, makes it look like it's a lower value, or with the lower one, make it a higher value. So yes, we did make sure that we were careful about those, comparing those apples and apples.
Okay, okay, is, what you're talking about right now, is that page 55, where it talks about the market median at $4.74 an hour? The COV is at 401 an hour and the variance is at .73? Because when I figured it out, I didn't realize that you guys were at 36 hours, and I figured out 401 times 2,080 divided by 12 came out to 695, not 626. So then when I did the 626 and times it by 12 divided by 280, it came out to 361 an hour as the market median. So that was what I did wrong, was is I did it on the 2,080 hours and it should have been on something else.
What page are you looking at? I'm sorry.
I'm on 55.
Yeah, to answer your question, Councilmember Vias, that's correct. It should have been 10% less. Whatever the 2,080 is, it should be reduced because of our 36-hour work week. Then your numbers would probably match.
Okay, I got that. All right, go ahead, continue.
Okay, so the total compensation then, yes, big-ticket items were included in there. We looked for any of those major, large items that would be substantial adds to a total compensation. We looked for any of those major, large items that would be substantial adds to a total compensation. So where auto allowances were offered, usually at the executive or manager level, we did factor those in as well. Okay, so table five here is a summary showing both the base compensation. We've split out to show the retirement as a percentage of base, the medical and other as a percent as a dollar amount per hour, and then added those across to show that total compensation. We did highlight the various areas there to show which ones were more than 5% behind the market. Within this study, we're looking at plus or minus 5% of the market would be considered competitive. So anything that fell more than 5% below would be an area that we would want to look at and consider whether that should be recommended to a higher salary grade or what are the things that need to be looked at in order to make that competitive with the market and consistent with other job classes. Okay, salary survey findings, and we have the base compensation. There was 26 job classes that were below the market. You can see the range of variance there. It's from the farthest behind the market to that. It fell at the top of that bracket, that plus or minus 5%. And there was 52 job classes that were at or ahead of the market by that more than 5% threshold that we're looking at. That's just the base compensation. When we added in the value of the benefits, a little bit of a shift there. So we had 18 that were below the market by more than 5% and the remainder were either at or ahead of the market by more than 5%. Okay, so now that we've identified what the market value is for each of the occupations, we then looked at what the city's salary administration practices were and provided the city with a proposed salary grade that mirrors the current practice in the current value system. So we've got the five-step grade step that's included in the report. Each of those provides approximately 21.5% between the minimum and the maximum for each salary grade. There's 2.5% between each consecutive grade, and then there's 5% between each consecutive step. So there's an illustrative sample of what the proposed permanent grade-end step pay plan looks like. Again, hourly rate. Utilizing that proposed structure, we looked at what the market rates were and tried to propose a salary grade for each of those benchmark job classes. It was as close as possible at the maximum to what that market value was. Any of the job classes where we did not have survey data or benchmark data for it were linked through the career ladder or internal alignment process and moved by a similar amount. So this is where PSPC made some recommendations to the city of Victorville based upon market data and the internal alignment based upon PAQ information. So as we went through the PAQ and the interview process, this is the information that helped us to identify what the relationships between consecutive job classes should be. So based upon change in scope and complexity, we looked for a meaningful relationship or a separation between each of the job classes on that salary grade structure. We then met with the department heads to review that and get any feedback to make sure that our recommendations were meaningful and reviewed any PAQs or areas of concern where we wanted to make sure that we had the scope and complexity appropriate. Okay, on tables five and six are the recommended salary grades. Table six and seven, I'm sorry, table six and seven. Table six shows them in occupational order. Table seven is descending from the highest salary grade to the lowest salary grade. Assuming that the city wanted to move forward and implement those salary range structures, it would cost, this is the fiscal impact, to implement those new salary grade assignments. So it'd be about $448,000 on base payroll, 30% for your fringe benefits. It'd be about $583,000 if the city were to move forward with those salary grade range assignments. And this is where employees above the maximum step. If there are any employees that are above the maximum step, our recommendation would be that those city, those employees' salary would stay the same. They would not be reduced, but their salary would be frozen until such time that the market caught up to them and their salary fell below the top step of the new recommended range. Just to highlight, the highlights of the benefit survey. We did request information about the medical, dental, vision, retirement benefits, paid leave offerings, and the additional detail is provided in the back of the report. But included in the narrative portion of the report, we just have the highlights. The cafeteria portion, because some employers don't provide individual medical, dental, vision contributions. They roll it up in what is referred to as a cafeteria plan. So we looked at that also. We looked at the market median and compared what the city of Victorville's contribution is and compared that to the market median. And they're only slightly behind what the market median is, so they're 15% below. Typically with cafeteria, the medical, dental, vision, we don't get too nervous about the variances because the trend in benefit offerings has been that employers are continuing to reduce the amount that they contribute and increase the amount that employers do. So that is actually a very competitive placement in the market compared to some of our other surveys that we've conducted. Paid leave benefits. Again, the city is ahead of the market median. Now again, you can see we've got some averages in there. The reason we use the median is because averages do tend to be skewed by that one or two employers that offer either a lot more or a lot less. So the median is a little more stable point for comparison. So when we looked at the variance to the median at vacation, and these would be at years of service. So you can see at one year of service, at five years of service, at 10 years of service, 15, 20, and over 20, that the city is very competitive in the amount of vacation that is offered to its employees. And again, sick hours and the holiday hours below that. The city's a little behind on the sick hours per year as compared to the median. And same thing with the holiday, they're only one behind on the holidays. Okay, so as far as PSPC's recommendations to the city, we would recommend that the city look to adopting some form of a prevailing rate competitiveness policy, whether it be 100% of the prevailing rate, which is what is included in this report, or some other point to tie to at the market in order to apply salary administration practices. At prevailing rates within the scope of this report means plus or minus 5% of the market rates. And if you apply that type of a policy, then it does give the city flexibility to modify based upon financial constraints if appropriate to do so. But it gives a point of reference to all jobs being within 5% of the market as opposed to some of them being way ahead or some of them being way behind. Establishing the city's level of competitiveness at 100% of the market, that would be what's reflected in tables six and seven of the report. And if the city were to adopt it that, you saw the fiscal impact in there, is about 2.4% of your current base salary. And then we do recommend that the city continue to update and maintain this plan by periodically going back to the market, collecting new market data, and then recalculating the change in the market for each of those benchmark job classes. Other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
We have a market median of sick hours of 96 and city of Victorville of 87. If you had an eight-hour work day, that's 96 hours. But if you have a 36-hour work week, all of that was taken into consideration? All of the difference hours as opposed to a 40-hour work week?
Yeah, these were actually just an hours-per-hour comparison. So yes, it's the number of hours that they would be eligible for on an accrual basis. So how many were accrued during the course of the year? So is the, I guess the question is if the employees are working 36 hours, is their sick leave and holiday leave reduced? And it's my understanding it's not reduced, that it's X number of hours per year.
It actually was reduced several years ago when we did the 10% furlough. Both the sick hours were reduced with an expectation that there would be less need because of 36-hour work week. And we also reduced the number of holidays as well because with every Friday off now, and one of the holidays every year is the Friday after Thanksgiving. And clearly, we don't have to give employees the Wednesday before the Thanksgiving as a replacement. They're already getting that Friday off. So that's one of the reasons why both our sick and vacation hours are probably comparing a little bit below the median is because we have less of a need for that with the reduction in hours.
Yeah, you can claim that employees need another holiday, but it's a Friday and they don't work anyway.
Right, exactly. That's why we reduced the number of holidays back in 2009 when we implemented the furlough.
So if it's only one difference, then we really don't have one difference.
No, no, no. And there's no recommendation of any changes to either the sick or the holiday accruals. We do, I do have a recommendation on vacation accruals when you'd like me to go through that.
Well, my concern, my concern, my concern, getting my attention, is that I know the employees like to be off every Friday. It's great. But I also know as we start back on track and people get back to work and the recession gets over, there's more and more of a demand from the general public that we be open on Fridays. And I have mentioned that to some employees that we're going to be faced with addressing that. Almost as if it was panic time, but yet.
There really is no more, I've met with all the employees just a few weeks ago to explain how we were moving forward with this process. And there really is no more divisive question you can ask a group of employees than about the furloughs. And I don't want to say it's necessarily exactly 50/50, but in my experience, the comments that I've received are pretty darn close to 50/50 that half of them have made adjustments to their own personal life. They like having the Fridays off. They'd just as soon stay on 36 hours a week for the rest of their career here. And the other half would very much like to go back to what they consider for the full-time day, full-time week of 40 hours a week. So it's an interesting discussion for a future time. I can tell you right now that we don't have the budget to increase the employees' hours to eliminate those furloughs at this point. But it is definitely a hot topic anytime we start talking about pay and compensation.
So Doug, obviously, you're going to get to your recommendation in that you just brought up the budget. And I think that, you know, we've had a series of workshops. We've discussed adding additional deputies to the streets, additional code enforcement officers. There's been kind of a wish list put in front of the council, and this would add to it. Obviously, your work's cut out for you. Exactly what is it that you're recommending to the council that, as we go into budget time, that we adopt with respect to this, and how does that affect the others? And how do we get a little bit of everything that we want?
And that's sort of, it leads me right into the recommendation, so why don't I jump into that? One of the things that Kay mentioned was that the impact to our budget would be about a 2.4% over what the current compensation levels are at the city. Keep in mind that about 40% of that number, I don't remember what it was exactly, $450,000, $460,000. About 40% of that is general fund with the 60% being other funds that are, I'll just say, healthier than the general fund. As we were developing the budget, which is going to be presented to you in about two weeks, we were sort of at a crossroads. Every year, we have personnel actions that are part of the budget, whether it's, you know, as jobs have changed, whether it's because people have left, that involve recruitments and other things. So some of the moves that would happen as a result of this plan, if it's implemented, are already being proposed, not because of the plan, but because of other needs as part of, would have been proposed as part of the budget. So the true cost of this plan is almost neutral compared to what the budget would have been presented to you as. So ultimately, what, I've really three and a half, I'll say, recommendations. Number one, because we are at a crossroads, we want to be able to present a budget to you in two weeks. I would recommend that you direct staff to incorporate the study, the compensation portion of the study, into next year's budget. Allowing for those other priorities that you've made very clear. So it's not that we're asking you to take a hard vote to approve this plan, and it will be part of next year's budget. It's more that we include this as an assumption, assuming we can hit the other targets that you've asked for, hit the other priorities that you've asked for, it would be included in the budget. Because if we don't have some kind of direction tonight, then we're sort of on a bilateral path with the budget. One with these changes, one with other changes. I will tell you that the other changes, although I mentioned the cost is very similar, this is much more comprehensive because it looks at all the employees, whereas the other one is a little bit more piecemeal depending on as things come up. So the other recommendation that I would make would be that you direct staff to reduce the vacation accrual hours. That was one of the big differences where we were well above the market, as much as 247 hours. If you work a 36-hour week and you have 247 hours of vacation accruals every year, that's equivalent of nearly seven weeks off. That's just unheard of. I don't know how it got to that level. I don't even want to speculate. I have my own thoughts, but they're immaterial at this point. So what I would recommend.
I thought that was changed. I thought that was changed.
It's never been changed. Well, all of the vacation accruals came down in 2009 because of the 10%. So they all came down. So it was technically higher than that at one point back in 2008. It was higher than the 247, whatever 10% more is, I believe. So what I'm recommending, that the council direct the staff as part of next year's budget, is to reduce those vacation accrual hours to the median, which would cap it at 160 hours for anybody at 15 years and beyond. It's essentially four weeks off.
But I agree, but as I recall, somewhere you and I were going through these benefits and looking at who we're at, considering upon how long the employee had been here, there were some employees accumulating 32 days a year.
Yes.
And we couldn't figure out how they got there either.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but this.
It was six days over than what was allowed. I don't know how it got there. Six days or, yeah.
It's a tremendous amount. We're well above the market for those long-term employees. So there would be savings involved with that, obviously, with those accruals. There wouldn't be immediate savings necessarily. It would be more longer term as employees leave the city, as they, you know, we have to pay for that time over the years. So the other recommendation I would make is in regard to the cafeteria plan. Our 650 is about $100 below the median. So I would recommend that we go get to the median, which would be about $740, $750, but have that be over a multi-year period. So maybe over either the next two years or if you are agreeable to implementing the compensation portion for next fiscal year, that we do the cafeteria plan increases over the following two fiscal years. Something along those lines as the budget allows. Then the last one that you'll see that we are above the market on is our PERS contributions. The city of Victorville still pays the full 8% of employee contributions. We actually looked at implementing a change as part of the compensation study that is before you tonight. And quite frankly, it skewed everything so tremendously because the market right now is in flux. Some cities have gone to zero and beyond. I know the city of Asbury with some other bargaining units actually have the employees picking up a portion of the employer share, which I don't know that is, that's what the intent, yeah, the employer share, not the employee share. So, well, certain interpretations of the Pepper Law would have employees pick up all of the employee share plus half of the employer share.
Well, that was because they wanted to go from 2.5 to 2.7.
Is that what it was?
That's what it was.
Okay, okay, there you go. Now you have a little bit more information. I was unaware of that.
Their pension is going to be worth a lot more in the end, so it would be to their benefit to pick up the employer's portion.
Got it, as long as they're paying whatever they.
So my point is that, at least for now, that we put that portion on hold because as Kay did the survey almost a year ago now, all those employers were in flux. They're in different stages of having employees pick up different portions of that PERS retirement. So my recommendation would be we wait until another year or two or three until that has all solidified and the dust has settled before we look at that issue, study salaries again, and do it as a total compensation to include, you know, whatever the law finally sorts out. I don't think there's a definitive answer yet on how much employees are required to pick up under the new law.
Doug, you know, today, or last week, I think we all got a memo about employee benefit renewal coming up in July 1st. And it caused me to request, you know, what was the renewal from our current insurance carriers? And originally proposed 28% increase negotiated down to 14.5. But the reality is, is that that's nearly $300,000. down to 14.5. But the reality is, is that that's nearly $300,000 increase. Was that budgeted for? Do you have the ability to pay that kind of increase on top of what you're looking to do here, on top of what we're looking to do, and the other?
Unfortunately, for your employees, that $300,000 increase would hit them directly.
It doesn't hit us.
Yeah, it would not be paid by the city. That's one of the reasons why I'm recommending, at least at some point, that we increase our cafeteria plan to the median, because right now they're about $100 behind the median. But the employees, even if some of the employees, I know you all got the charts in here, we didn't really get into that, but even the employees who would have a pay increase as a result of this study, whether it be at large or small, if they are on the Aetna plan, and they have a family on the Aetna plan, the cost to them is going to go up 100, I think it's $190 per month. So they're losing ground regardless because of the health insurance increases. So that increase that you see is the costs that are borne by the employees, not by the city.
Okay, because, well, to me, that's a problem. Do we know how much it went up last year?
Last year was 2%, I believe.
2.45.
Okay.
Is that for the employer or because they have their family? Is it which?
Yeah, Tom is saying, he doesn't have a microphone, but he's saying across the board was 2.45%.
Across the board, okay.
I'm just, I'm concerned about this 14.5, and, you know, next year we would see the same thing. And we've got to, we've got to have some plan to deal with that. You know, we're supposed to have healthcare reform, and this is supposed to drive costs down. Costs are going up, and I'm seeing that because I'm in the industry. And so I don't know what we're going to do to address that, but we've got to come up with a plan to proactively address it, because this is unacceptable. And you can't continue to throw this on the employees. They're going to get a point where they can't afford it to pay for themselves or even their family. And then we got real problems if they're not covered by healthcare. So I just, we've got to figure that out.
Yeah, we are, we are working on that actively. I don't know what percentage of that 14.5 we were told. I have 4% in my head. Okay, Bill just held up four fingers. Essentially, 4% of that 14.5 is because of the Affordable Healthcare Act. So we are now paying more in order to pay for someone else's portion of healthcare.
Well, I hear you say when you pay more, it makes it affordable?
[laughing]
I'm sorry.
Do we pay the actual federal taxes that they impose on employers now as a part of this? So as a governmental entity, we're not exempt from paying those federal employer taxes?
Yeah, it's rolled into our rates.
We don't have to pay for our license plates, but we do have to pay for our healthcare.
Are we at all budgeting to pay down our pension debts, Gadsby, 45, and all those other ones? Or are we just paying the maximum amount?
We pay, we're on a pay-as-you-go.
So that's incurring a lot of debt for the city. My concern is that we continue to increase salaries and benefits. I mean, clearly, something needs to be done with the medical. But I think we also need to start paying attention to paying down that debt, because, you know, you can have all these great pensions, but is it going to be there when you retire? I doubt it if we keep going this route. So we need to start looking at paying it down and putting some money aside for that. So what's more important to the employees? The younger ones will probably say, oh, I want the money now. The older ones are looking like, okay, is this pension going to be here? Probably not if we keep this route.
Yeah, and actually, Gadsby is sort of slowly forcing that issue on all government entities, as, you know, at first, they force us to recognize it, and then eventually, the belief is that they will force some level of a pay down, or some level of pre-funding all of those, all of those costs.
But your debt is growing a lot bigger if you're not paying it down.
It is. Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a lot of questions, but not of our consultant. Do we have any questions directly of our consultant, since she's waiting patiently for-
I, no, I don't.
No?
I don't have any questions.
Oh, I do. I was disappointed, because I wanted to see your spreadsheet on exactly what comparables you used for each position. So if you could send that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
To me, that's the most important part of this study.
Yes, I have that. It's not included as part of the report, but it is a separate report, as well as I will look into the VVWR and the Adelanto, because I know I have notes on it, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
I doubt anybody want to go to Adelanto, but just-
Well, I believe it was considered. I just don't remember why it was not included.
Might have been size of employer, because we're a large employer. I don't know how many employees they have, but-
Yeah, the problem is if the city is too small, you're not going to find a lot of matches anyway, because everybody's doing-
I know, but they use MWA, so you can't get any smaller than that.
Yeah, that's true.
It's cherry picking, so.
Well, we can always determine to look at them, and if we don't feel that they're comparable, we can eliminate them. We have the data, but I think that's our call if we really don't believe they're comparable.
I think what needs to be done is to find actual comparable agencies, size-wise, to Victorville. Because I think that's really going to be your competitive. I mean, to go to MWA or Adelanto, I don't think anyone's going to, you know, do that. And is there really a lot of vacancies at MWA now?
Now, some of the water agencies were included, even though they're much smaller, simply because we've got water functions. It was to be able to get some comparables for those water functions that we've got, that a lot of the other cities wouldn't-
Oh, that makes sense, if you're just using it for those departments.
It's just for, it's really just for those departments. It's for when we had positions that most other cities wouldn't necessarily have a water function. Asperia does, Apple Valley does not, a lot of the cities on the list. So that's why a lot of the water-
That's right, because they have the water licensing, and you can't find that. Okay. So that's where that spreadsheet would come in very handy for me, is to see if you were using those positions for those water agencies.
Right, because for some of those water agencies, they're not going to have your development position. So there's a no-match showing, even if that employer is on that sheet, it's going to be a no-match, because they just don't have a comparable job.
Right, right, yeah. That will be helpful for me.
Comments, questions of the consultant?
Yeah.
Okay. We will call you back if we have some more questions, and thank you very much for your report.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for your time this evening.
I do have questions. I don't think they're to you, they're with Doug or staff, but if we do have questions, they'll forward them to you, I'm sure.
Absolutely. Well, we'll be available. Thank you.
Doug, we have two council members that are absent. Are you going to sit down with him and go over this report?
Absolutely, yeah. I don't have that set up yet, but I'm definitely going to offer that to them.
Okay. And then, there ought to be an opportunity for all the five councilmen to discuss these issues together, which means that you didn't expect any kind of a decision tonight, I hope.
Not a decision, no. We were hoping for direction on at least the compensation piece, so that we can be ready for the schedule that you'd requested on the budget. Certainly, we can, we can hold off and meet again on this issue. The impact to the budget side of things is, I don't want to say immaterial, but it's very similar to what would be proposed if you threw this in the trash right now. So we were hoping for some direction that wouldn't be a final decision. That final decision would come only once we present a budget to you that also addresses the other priorities that Mayor Bo Kim reminded us of.
Well, I personally think it's a lot of very, very good information. I just have not had the chance to go through it. And for my own satisfaction of analyzing and looking at it, and, you know, I do work with other entities and agencies. I do have some questions, but they can't be answered here, because the questions I want to ask are from other entities and agencies, and they're not here. And then the council as a whole should talk in regard to this. This does affect our overall budget, but we heard the presentation of our police chief about the dire need for adding policemen, and we have some, we still aren't financially out of the woods, so we've got to address this very, very carefully. I certainly don't want to shortchange the employees. I know that at one time, when we cut back so drastically that they took a hit, I don't want to be unfair to them, and I don't want to be unfair that we expect our employees to do things that like cities are paying a better salary. Yet if it's within that 5% plus or minus, I think that's acceptable to everyone. But I also have some questions, because we have several employees that are 15, 20% overpaid, and we haven't discussed those. So I don't want to discuss them, you know, if you name a position, and there's only one employee in the position, you're discussing that employee in public, and that isn't appropriate. And so we obviously are going to have to have an executive session to discuss some of these positions, because it affects either one or two individuals. And because of the privacy and not to embarrass anyone, I think that executive session is just mandatory.
Can we have an executive session to discuss salaries?
I'd recommend, then, that we continue to study this, direct questions to our city manager. And I don't know when the next council meeting is, but schedule an executive session first thing at the next council meeting to get these questions out of the way.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I would also, you know, I think that, obviously, Doug, as a part of the budgeting process, you bring forth your recommendation to the council as best you see how to implement what you've, what your recommendations are. But only with one caveat, you know, when you look at the fringe benefit versus an increase in salary, there's taxes on salary. There's no tax on what goes towards medical. And so if I'm an employee and I get $100 towards medical, that's a full $100 versus if I get $100 in salary, I may only get 75, 60 bucks of that. So, you know, I know that that's not applicable to every single employee, but I would imagine the majority of them would benefit more from an increase in fringe benefit than they would from an increase in salary. I don't know how you blend the two. That's why we pay you the big bucks. But I think there's got to be something that can be done, where there's a blending of that, if at all possible.
Yeah. That would, I mean, if we could afford to do it in the same year, that would be the most fair way to do that. Salary changes that would be implemented if this is approved, or, you know, if we're given direction, wouldn't be an across-the-board change. That's the biggest difference, is that you've got some employees who would realize a change, and others that would not. If you had a chance to look at the charts, the charts are set up to kind of display the overall organizational chart, and they're color-coded based on whether those positions would be recommended to go higher in the classification, or in the compensation, or lower, in that case, those are the orange boxes, or remain the same, and those are the blue boxes. If you notice, the employee, the majority of the positions that would see some increase to their compensation are really the baseline of our employees, the ones that are out there getting the job done on a daily basis, out there working in our streets, working the front lines, if you will. Really, the foundation of our staff would see, it's not necessarily going to be a large increase, but would see some sort of increase, and perhaps over time, depending on where they are in that scale, they may see an additional increase. And then the other larger group of employees who would see some benefit on the compensation side are those that were, I think, most affected by the elimination of the 15 or 14, whatever, department head positions. Those employees who were previously assistant directors, who had to pick up pieces of director-type functions. And the fact that we have so few director jobs, some of that work has been spread out a little bit. So some of those sort of middle-to-upper management positions would also see a slight compensation change as a result. Whereas, most of our mid-level employees, there's really no change to their compensation. But to get back to your point, if all employees received another $100, let's say, it certainly would affect their bottom line more so, but it wouldn't be implementing, you know, the strategy that is the goal of the survey.
What about the employees that, let me back up. How much do we allocate per employee for health?
Right now, it's $650 per month.
$650?
Yeah.
But if they have coverage from someplace else, and don't need the coverage and can take cash, they only get 200?
I believe that's right, yeah. The stipend.
Oh, and since that's a $450 difference every month, our consultant considered every employee, and tuck into consideration getting paid 450 less a month.
No.
Like they did, because they don't even know that. And that's one of the issues where you never get parity, because you have a large group of employees that only get $200 a month. And since they don't have healthcare, they can apply that to something, including deferred comp. Individuals that have to pay for it get 650 to pay for it. And so there's not only parity, it's not even equitable. But I don't know how you get equity unless you just simply pay the 650 and require every single employee to have insurance. But if you have every single employee to have insurance, my understanding is the rate goes down for everyone. Again, I don't know that it still does with all the changes that occur. So that's why I still have so many questions, because if you say that you take all the compensation and include it in the hourly pay, you can't, because you have people in the same salary range that have two different levels of compensation because of the difference of 450 a month.
But let me disagree with you, Mr. Mayor, that the equity is there, because every employee has the opportunity to receive the 650. They elect to receive less than that and not take the benefits. So that's why the 650 is used, is because that's the maximum the city liability would be for each employee. If they elect to take 200, that's their choice. They could always come over to the city plan and get the $650.
But in the meantime, the city is saving 450 a month for every employee that doesn't have insurance, too.
That's correct. That's correct. And that stipend was, is based on a dollar amount that, you know, evolved over the years to be something that would be attractive enough to those employees who have that option to not take our benefit plan, but still save the city dollars. Now, that's where that figure came from.
You know what's helpful for me is to decide where the money should go, is if you do the percentage where it shows me how many employees are adequate with the 6, is it 650 or is it 626?
It's 650.
It's 650.
It was 626 for, I think, nine years. And then last year, we bumped it up to the 650.
Okay. So if I could get a percentage of how many are adequate with that, and then how many have the out-of-pocket for their families, so that we could see, you know, is there a big push for more benefit? And that will really help us a lot.
Okay.
You're proposing that those who don't take health insurance and get 200 a month toward other deferred comp or whatever, that that remain the same, or that, is there any increase in that?
You know, honestly, I hadn't considered it. At this point, I would, that's more of a future years scenario, but I don't know that I would necessarily increase that.
With this study, it not only gives the employee, you know, increases in salary, but it also, I think after the mass exodus that we did, you know, it helps organize and put them in the right categories. And so that needs to be done. And I've seen vast improvement just in the human resource department, where now I see all the job classifications up on the internet. And as a hiring manager, that's extremely helpful to me, to be able to comp, you know, to the cities, and to see that. So this is, this is going to do a lot of things, and I think that we need to look at it. But I think also, I would like to see, well, there's two council members missing, so, you know, that's important. And I understand that you've got to get it into the budget. But keep in mind, too, that the budget is just a guideline, you know? And I think that you're going on vacation, so even if the budget-
Not to advertise it, because a lot of people are trying to figure out when they can try to break into my house, so.
Okay.
You've got the captain back there, he just-
I encourage everyone that works for governmental entity, do not say when you're going on vacation.
Okay. So I definitely think that when we do the budget presentation, I want to see how much we owe for these pensions, you know? What is our liability there? And what does this change do to that liability that currently exists? And what is the plan to pay down that liability? Because that's very, very important to me. And I think as a council, we need to look at that. And I think a lot of cities don't, because it's so frightening. They just don't want to deal with it. But we also need to see how much more we're paying because we're not dealing with it. And I think that we have an obligation to our employees, past and present, to make sure that those pensions are there. So we need to, we need to just deal with it and look at that. And so maybe we can come up with a way, instead of, you know, it's over half a million dollars for this, that we put some of that money back into paying down some of this debt, take care of their needs for insurance, get this classification thing going, and come up with a five-year plan to get them on track, you know? But keep in mind- But keep in mind that we still have public safety as our top priority in this city. So that's how I kind of look at it, so.
And I thank you for your comments about the classification portion of it. That's really the biggest thing that happens, is it finally has our classifications make sense after all the turmoil that we experienced for the last five years. It kind of resets all the compensation, but also resets all of those, all of those relationships that you see in the org charts on the wall to where it actually makes sense. Whereas right now, we're still have these leftover pieces and parts that don't necessarily fit very well together because of that.
And that needs to, that definitely needs to happen. We can't delay that, because the sooner that we get this fixed, the more efficient the city is going to run.
Absolutely.
Well, I want to say, simply because we're looking at the salaries and we have employees here, and we don't normally have this many employees, personal thanks to all the employees who stuck with the city through the bad times that we have had in the last three years. One of the fears is because of the unknown and because of the debt and because of other things that were occurring that showed Victorville a negative light, I know some employees were wondering, should we bail out and go someplace else? What, you know, are we going to go bankrupt? The city was never in danger of going bankrupt if it handled things correctly, but there are some cities in bankruptcy that thought that was the farthest thing that could happen. That's over. There were very tenuous times. I know a lot of people who felt families and obligations really were concerned about staying with the city for those who stuck it out. Thank you. We do appreciate you. Thank you. I think that we've discussed, all we need to discuss at this time, we, the next item on the agenda is for public comment for any individual that's not on the agenda that wants to address items that are interest to the public, if anyone wants to come to the podium. Now is the time for those individuals to address the city council. I thought the gentleman was coming up, but I guess he's leaving, so. Okay, since we have no cards and no request and no one approaches the podium, Doug, is there any question about direction at this point? I know we put a lot on you, but-
Yes and no. I think I understand what you're expecting. You know, as we bring the budget forward, we'll bring you essentially this as an option for implementation as of July 1st, so that it's very clearly spelled out, along with those other priorities that you've all mentioned tonight, so that, you know, it's something that can be considered as part of a total, total package and ultimately decided on by all five council members. Of course, we'll answer the questions that you've had as quickly as we can. If we can get you an email or a memo that answers it quickly, we'll do that. If not, then we'll answer them at the next meeting, so.
Okay.
I would like it at the next meeting because I think it's important for the employees to understand that liability that's growing and what can happen, you know, just like these other cities where they just decide, okay, your pension's no good anymore. We don't have to honor that. And why? Because those cities just continued to give and give and give to the employees without taking care of that debt. So that debt, to me, if I was an employee here, I would be more concerned about that and getting that paid down, because, you know, you're spending your whole life here in the city when you could be making more money in the private sector and not having that pension but putting away, but at least you know that money's going to be there. And here, you can retire and 10 years into your retirement, find out, you know what? I'm not going to get a check anymore, because the city did not pay down that debt, and it broke the city.
Now, that liability, we can actually get to you tomorrow. We'll get that to you immediately. As far as a plan, I can tell you right now that as of today, we don't have one. It's been, for the 52 years of Victorville's existence, it's been a pay-as-you-go plan. We pay the amount that's due, and PERS adjusts it. In fact, as you'll see as part of the budget, in fact, Councilmember Baez, I remember seeing your budget yesterday, and a big increase was because of PERS changing that to ensure that the employees' pensions were safe when they go to cash them in. So we'll definitely get that for you tomorrow.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Thank all of you for coming and listening to this debate. We have more questions, but we'll try to get, I agree with Councilmember Weiss, we need to get through this as soon as possible so that we don't leave people hanging, and everyone knows what's likely to occur in the new budget year. So thanks, staff, council members for being here, and this meeting's adjourned.